Don't you worry.
Okay.
Yeah. See my look and I'm like, okay.
Mr. President.
Ma'am.
We're ready.
Good morning. I appreciate each and every one of you and your attendance and all of your interest and at this point, we will turn it over to our City Clerk.
This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, December the eighth. We have our invocation this morning by Pastor Mary Young, Solid Rock Church, and we'll stand, uh, please stand for our place of allegiance. Pastor Young.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Uh, with your bow and heads before a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, it is once again that we come before your presence as we seek to obtain mercy at the foot of your throne. And we acknowledge that you're Lord of Lords and that you are King of Kings, that you are the Creator and you're the giver of life. God, we come today, uh, because this is the day that you have made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. And Lord, we are thankful, God, for the opportunity, God, for these your city, uh, officials that you have put in place. Lord, we pray that you would give them humble hearts. We ask Father for forgiveness of sins and as well as for the wisdom to conduct business at hand on today. And Father, we pray that this would be one of the most effective and successful meetings of the year. Uh, we come against any division, uh, but we pray and we speak unity. God, we pray for those who may be sick in their bodies, that you would touch them and that you would bring healing to them in the name of Jesus. Now, Lord, we present these city officials before your throne because, uh, they have been elected by the people and we pray that this meeting, that God, that they would have peace and you would give them wisdom, knowledge and understanding, God, how to undertake the business of the city. And God, with all meetings, we pray that you would help them to respect and to re-honor one another, that they would keep in mind the quote, wise men differ, fools fall out. Lord, we pray that they will remember today that, uh, they have been elected by people with, uh, all people without prejudice, that they will remember, uh, what is best to do even during this time of the pandemic, that they will be good stewards of what you have placed them over, uh, remembering that many people are without jobs, without finances, and even during this holiday season that many suffer from the impact of this coronavirus. And God, we pray, God, today, those that have lost loved ones, that you will heal, uh, and be to them what you saw fit to take away. We pray today, God, that you would give them what to do, how to do, when to do and where to do, in Jesus' name. And Father, teach us to pray, as Jesus taught the disciples to pray and say, our Father, which are in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come. Thy will be done in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us of our debt as we forgive our dead towards. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever. Amen. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But before we would, uh, conclude, I'd ask that we would observe a moment of silence in memory of the life and legacy of two great District Two residents and also great Mobilians in general, uh, Ms. Patricia Lofton and also Mr. Charles Perkins. And if I could, I'd also like to add Ms. Dorothy Dergan. Uh, three great Mobilians, uh, all have been called to their home on high, contributed much to the fabric of this city. Uh, Ms. Lofton, a retired educator, uh, Mr. Perkins, active in his alumni association and active in his community. Ms. Dergan, a retired nurse. Uh, let's keep those families in our thoughts and prayers and we certainly offer our highest and most sincere condolences. If we can observe a moment.
Mr. President. I could add, I could add Mr. Lawrence Batiste Senior, please.
Oh, my goodness, I did not know that. Good for you, brother. Uh, let's, let's keep those four families and all families that have lost loved ones, particularly during these holiday season, uh, and due to the coronavirus, let's keep all of them in our thoughts and prayers and let's observe this moment of silence. Thank you.
Roll call. President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory. Statement of rules.
Again, good morning. In response to national, state and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Alabama Open Meetings Act and the Governor's Supplemental Emergency Proclamation, we are meeting remotely. While we are all in different places, we are able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at City Hall. And in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through the live stream. All items we will discuss during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of city government. The public is still able to present comments to the council by emailing the city clerk at city clerk at cityofmobile.org. As always, the meeting is live streamed and can be viewed through the city's website or on the council's Facebook page. Uh, we will allow for speakers, speakers are granted three minutes to present their commentary. At the end of that second minute, a bell will sound indicating that you have sixty seconds to conclude any remarks. And as always, we are appreciative of your genuine interest in your municipal government. Ma'am City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of December first.
Second.
Been properly moved and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes all approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Mayor's route to Montgomery, I don't think we're gonna hear from him directly for earlier conversation.
That's correct.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President, of the adoption of the agenda and that all items listed as essential COVID-19 items be declared as such.
Second.
They're properly moved and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals, we have request for away with the noise ordinance on December twenty-third from four PM until nine PM in Mardi Gras Park.
It's moved.
Second.
Probably moved and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings, today is a public hearing to consider the approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Shetonya Nicholson doing business as Busy Bee's Carrier and Transportation Service for a shuttle service.
It's moved. Please, public hearing, okay.
Is, is there anyone here?
I am.
Is, is anyone here that would like to participate? Okay, we, we are listening now, Ms. Nicholson.
I'm sorry, I didn't quietly hear you, do you mind repeating that question?
Uh, w- we're listening. Th- this is the public hearing and if there's anything that you would like to, uh, offer for the council to hear, we're certainly interested.
Oh, okay, thank you so much. Um, this is my first time ever attending a, uh, city council meeting, so please forgive me if I am unacknowledged of how this works. But, um, I'm basically here to obtain, um, approval to purchase my business license for the city, uh, for my carrier and transportation services.
Wonderful, wonderful, any questions of Ms. Nicholson?
No, sir, not at this moment.
Awesome. Well, we hope. Good luck to you. Well, we, well, we hope that you be, uh, greatly successful, uh, in a particular area that you'll be focused in, uh, Ms. Nicholson.
Um, well, my initial focus would be to provide medication from the, um, mail order facilities pharmacies to long-term or short-term healthcare facilities for, um, the senior citizens.
Wow.
And then I would branch off and do a shuttle service for the elderly to get back and forth from wherever they are living to their doctor's appointments.
Much needed, sir. Much needed. Well, we, we hope and pray that it's, it's imminently successful and, and, uh, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Any, anyone else that would like to, uh, speak during this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider ascending to the vacation of a portion of South Conception Street west of Metro Jail and also, um, public hearing to consider ascending to the vacation of a portion of St. Emmanuel Street east of Metro Jail.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing?
Mr. Hill, uh, Reggie Hill is here.
Mr. Hill.
Uh, tha- thank you, Madam City Clerk, Mr. President, uh, members of the council, uh, to the administration and to citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Uh, Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Center Street. Uh, I want to thank the city clerk in her office for their transparency, uh, and always being willing to meet the needs of the citizens of Mobile pertaining to city business. Uh, before I begin, Mr. President, um, I just want to make a few things clear. Uh, while it may appear that I am against an effort of law enforcement, that couldn't be further from the case. Um, I am not for defunding the police or abolishing the force. I am merely an advocate for justice and righteousness through law. Um, as mentioned this morning, uh, by Pastor Jackson, uh, wise men differ and fools fall out. So this is not, uh, idea of me being, um, and I, I guess you could say an antagonist of this, but I just believe we can approach it differently. Um, so I want to begin by expressing my gratitude for Chief Batiste, uh, who leads the Mobile Police Department. I appreciate his willingness to work directly, uh, with us and I truly believe he has a heart for the people. I want to join Councilman Dave and offer him condolences on his loss. Um, as well, uh, Mr. President, let the record show, uh, when it came time for raises to be approved from Mobile Police Department, there was one citizen who didn't work for the police or the city, uh, who spoke in favor of that measure and that was me. So it's, it's not that I am against, again, law enforcement, uh, it's just some of the approaches I believe we could look at going different. So it brings us to these agenda items today. Uh, while on the surface, it doesn't express the idea of expansion. Uh, any of us who can read in between the lines or who have been participating in this process for quite some time, understand that this is an avenue in which we will expand the jail. Uh, while I do recognize that there is overcrowding in our current Metro Jail, there are other ways that we can eradicate that problem. I believe that we need to invest more resources, the same way we intend to invest nearly one point three million dollars in technology. We could do those same types of initiatives for services to prevent and be proactive in eliminating criminal activity within our city. As well, I believe that we could invest more if we are willing to do performance contracts for tourism efforts. I believe that we can increase the level of performance contracts that are allowed to those organizations who do have proactive practices who prevent these ideals that lead towards, uh, delinquency and criminal activity. So I normally have a set of notes that, um, I use to present when I come before this body. But today I just really wanted to speak, uh, from the heart because it's, it's, it's saddening to know that we would be considering something of this measure in which we would be expanding the jail. Uh, bondage is something that we have to take a greater look at. Criminal justice reform is something that we have to take a greater look at. I believe that, uh, Chief Batiste, I'm not sure the other municipalities within the county because we know that this jail represents more than just Mobile. I'm not sure of their stance, but I believe that right here in the city, we have the people in place to actually do things that could be better, uh, all for the future of our city. So as you all make this decision, um, today, I hope that you're going to consider that we haven't put the full effort into eradicating crime in our community as we see that there's a steady increase. Um, and I believe if we could do those measures, we wouldn't have to utilize our resources in expanding facilities. Uh, we could utilize those resources towards improving the quality of safety and quality of life within our communities. Um, so I, I hope that we're gonna consider this, maybe take some more time, uh, to look at it. Um, and I, I even got to see, uh, the county attorney last week, uh, downtown. And I believe that he is a, a genuine, uh, good-hearted person as well and I believe that he's doing what he believes in the best interest of the county. But I hope that we will take, uh, more time in considering this measure as it impacts the future of so many people. And I thank you all for the opportunity to speak for, for you on the floor.
Mr. President.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Richardson.
I would just like to say for the record because I believe citizens, citizens from all over the city are listening, uh, to us conduct our meeting today. For the record, the city is not getting ready to do anything but the jailhouse. The city's not getting ready to spend any money on the jailhouse. City, we don't own the jailhouse. It's the Mobile County Jailhouse, it's owned by the county. And what the county has told us that it's dangerous to move a prisoner from, from one building to another building because someone could be stitching up on the roof and they could blow the brains out of the officer of, of the prisoner. And they believe that they, they need the, the ability to enclose all of their property. So whatever they're doing with these prisoners, the public would not be involved in it. And people couldn't ride right by, people can't go right, right by the jailhouse while they are doing this. So they asked us to vacate, uh, a portion of South Conception and St. Emmanuel Street. So they can do what they need to do to keep, uh, the officers safe and the prisoners safe. They're not asking us to contribute no money toward that to help them, they, they're not asking us to do any of that. They're asking us to vacate a small portion of South Conception Street and St. Emmanuel Street. And when we get this done, then they can go ahead on and do what they need to do to keep everybody safe. Uh, we have debated this for more than two months. Today is time for us to tell the county to move forward. I'm not for holding this up another second. I'm for us moving on with this. We have debated this up and down at public hearings, people have had a chance to come down, did somebody want to say? And, uh, I think today we're gonna have the opportunity to vote. I'm in favor of voting on this and let the county go ahead on and do what they need to do with the jailhouse.
Mr. President, if I may.
Uh, no, no, sir, Mr. Hill, I think your time has elapsed.
I believe my time has, my time hasn't elapsed.
It, 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 well, we, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have rebuttal. Uh, that's, that's not, you, you've made your commentary and now, uh, Councilman Richardson had the ability, uh, to offer some commentary and, and, but we appreciate your expression.
If it's on my, if it's on, if my time hasn't elapsed though, I, I still believe I have an opportunity to.
Your time has elapsed, Mr. Hill. Your, your time has, your time has elapsed, Mr. Hill. Ma'am City Clerk?
Uh, Ms. Hill, your time did, um, expire.
Was that during Mr. Richardson's comment?
Madam, excuse me, uh, Mr. Hill. Ma- Ma'am City Clerk, can you move forward with your agenda? Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Did you close the, yeah, um, did you close the hearing?
The public hearing is closed.
Okay. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, we have, um, no one signed for agenda items or non-agenda items. Essential COVID-19 items held over forty-seven-five-nine, declare the structure at three-twenty-four Lexington Avenue, a public nuisance and order it demolished. Eight, eight-six-six, eight-six-seven, eight-six-eight, eight-six-nine, eight-seventy, eight-seventy-one, eight-seventy-two. Our improvement purchase orders to truck equipment sales, UJ Chevrolet, Dana Safety Supply, Gray Bar Electric. Twenty-one-eight-seven-three, authorized contract amendment one with Motec, Alabama for engineering services, Dolphin Street. Sixty-eight-seven-nine, authorized the sale or lease of property at twenty-six-six-two, Filling Jim Street.
It's moved.
It's moved, second.
They're probably moved and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Essential COVID-19 items being introduced for the first time, eighty-eight-zero-four-one through sixty-nine-zero-one.
Mr. President, move for immediate consideration of items forty-seven-eight-ninety-four and forty-seven-eight-ninety-five, sixty-eight-ninety-six, eight-ninety-seven, eight-ninety-eight, eight-ninety-nine, nine-hundred-and-nine-zero-one. Remainder items to lay over one week pursuant to council.
Is there a second?
Check, check it.
They're properly moved and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Forty-seven-eight-nine-four and eight-nine-five are extending to the vacation of a portion of South Conception Street west of Metro Jail and a portion of St. Emmanuel Street east of Metro Jail. Sixty-eight-nine.
I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna take it separate, I'm sorry.
Sixty, sixty-eight-nine-six, eight-nine-seven, eight-nine-eight, eight-nine-nine, eight, um, nine-hundred-and-nine-zero-one are determining appropriations to the Mobile Area Disc Golf Association, Restoration Deliverance Outreach Ministry, Providence Foundation for Festival of Flowers, United Way of Southwest Alabama, City of Mobile Human Relations Commission serve a public purpose and approve payment and award of the November twenty-twenty firefighter of the month.
Moved.
Second.
They're probably moved and second, any discussion?
Yes. On the vacations, if I may, I just would like to, um, kind of dovetail on what, um, Councilman Richardson was saying about the safety aspects and the reason for the closure of the street is their expansion. And, um, in all of our conversations with the commissioners and with, um, their public safety officials and our public safety officials, it is in the very best interest that we vacate this portion of these streets in order to, um, work with the, um, county since we are a partnership in the jail, no, we're not doing the construction. But it is, um, certainly something that our city, um, has use of, um, almost too much unfortunately. But again, it was, um, proven that they feel these changes will make the community safer, both the general public and also the inmates and the personnel. So it's a very good reason to do this vacation.
Any other, uh, discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcement.
Mr. Vice President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. On last Tuesday, um, the city was privileged, uh, with some great information that's located in District Three, uh, with the, uh, city, uh, purchasing the, uh, USA family. Um, that along, you know, with the great, you know, things that are coming to our city, especially down in District Three area, in the Brookly area. And that, that's a win-win situation for the city, the citizens and the surrounding area. And even having the good news are coming up next week for more discussion, uh, with the cathedral. Um, you know, new airport, um, new water access and even water access to, to take the tourism from, um, the, um, Maritime Museum, you know, all the way up to Africa Town. So we've got great news coming that's happening in the city of Mobile and especially thanks to this council and administration, the mayor, for the great things that's going on in our city. And also I want to remind about our CIP, CIP meeting immediately, uh, following this meeting and, um, all the council are working to stay on this particular zone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, I certainly agree with you. Glad to see, uh, and hear that great news in your district last week, that's wonderful. Uh, Ms. Rich.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, I would just like to wish everyone a happy Hanukkah. On those that celebrate, it will begin Thursday evening and ends the evening Friday, the eighteenth. So it's an eight-day lighting of candles, it's a happy time and all, all, all the celebration is a good time to get together with family even if we're zooming as opposed to doing it on a personal level with each other. So again, I wish everyone a very happy Hanukkah season, thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to, um, announce to the council that on last Friday, December the fourth, my granddaughter Maya Lawson gave birth to baby London Julian Lawson.
All right.
It had been forty years since his son been born to this family. And let me just say, it was great news. And I used personal privilege to issue a revolu- uh, a resolution declared last Friday, London Julian Lawson Day all over the city of Mobile. And I gave a copy of the resolution to the city clerk's office and asked them to enter it into the record. That's how, that's how important I felt this, um, new, um, male member of our family coming into, uh, the world, uh, born with his eyes wide open and he only clo- he closes his eyes when he goes to sleep. His, uh, he is, he is woke. And he, uh, is moving his head, I, I am just excited, uh, for, for my end, for him. I would like to also, uh, share this information that on yesterday, uh, President-elect, uh, Joe Biden, uh, made an important announcement, uh, in, uh, in appointing an, uh, general, Lord, Lord Austin as his next secretary, as the next Secretary of Defense. Lord Austin is my cousin, his ancestors came from Naps just like I did. And, um, he went on to become a full-starred general. Uh, General Petraeus, uh, directed the forces in Iraq. And when General Petraeus left, General Lord Austin took over those forces in Iraq. Uh, he has directed the American forces across the world and he is now, he would now be served at, on, as of, um, January the twentieth, he would be serving as the Secretary of Defense. We have a, a Mobile person and a relative of Fred Richardson that's gonna be on the front line. I just wanted to make that known to everybody, look out for that name, General Lord Austin. And, uh, yesterday I wrote the mail regarding, um, the status and requesting the status to the resurfacing program, um, and a possible schedule of where the, uh, what's left to be, uh, resurfaced, what district's left to be surfaced and, uh, and, and to let me know when they'll be getting to these various districts. People are asking me when they're gonna resurface my street, I don't, I'm, it's nothing, I don't know where they are, what they're doing. I don't have any information on that. So I made that request and I hope in the next day or two I get a response, uh, from the administration, uh, letting me know where they are with this program. That's it for me, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, and I know you are incredibly proud as we all are to have a native Mobilian ascend to such a high and respected position. And we certainly wish him well in, in that new endeavor and look forward to the, uh, change, well, I'm not gonna say that, look forward to his, to his, uh, working for the all of America's citizens.
Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Williams.
Good morning, what a great day in Mobile, Alabama. I'd like to join Ms. Rich as those, uh, of our. I'd like to join Ms. Rich as those, uh, of our city start a celebration on Thursday, uh, a very happy, uh, Hanukkah. And, uh, it is indeed a great time of year, that, uh, we share this joy, uh, with the, uh, with the Jewish community. And I just wish it to be the very best, uh, that could possibly be. There is so much to be thankful for, the, uh, in fact, today, the Catholic Church, uh, universally, uh, recognizes the Immaculate Conception of Mary, uh, which was, uh, God's choice of, uh, bringing a Savior into the world. It is, um, um, again, just an absolute great day, and I, um, I just, you, you know, you kind of, every once in a while, you come across a day and you're gonna go, what's, um, you know, what are we gonna do tomorrow, but today is today, and it's a great day to celebrate, especially in the Catholic Church. So I join all, uh, recognizing that day here as well. Um, and then, um, and then all the good news, uh, surrounding the Cotilda. Um, you know, as it went on, as everybody started talking, I, I, I didn't want to say something until I was able to check in and make sure that was a possibility. But I think it's another, uh, great use for, uh, the, the duck boats, and I know that Mr. Clark has certainly recognized that. They are still here, still able to do that, ready to go, uh, this is something that, you know, they could, uh, there's, the, the possibilities are endless. I look forward to where this path leads, the city of Mobile, it's certainly, uh, a great day in that respect as well. But that is, that is all for today, thank you very much, Mr. President, good day.
No prob-, no problem, Mr. John Charles Williams, from the fourth district, and I want to say, I got Mr., Mr. Daves.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to go back, I'd like to go back for a moment, uh, to Brookly, which was, uh, an incredibly important announcement last week. You know, we've had some good economic development news, uh, in this city over the last, uh, seven or eight years. Uh, after a long period of, you know, really struggling, uh, but I think, I think we've all felt like, uh, that there were perhaps, uh, some quality of life issues that, that we maybe hadn't made as much progress on as we had in economic development. And rarely do you find an event happen that has tremendous important economic development benefits, and at the same time tremendous important quality of life, uh, benefits, as this announcement does. Uh, it, it, the, the, the future shows us that we are going to have, uh, miles of shoreline along the bay that's gonna be accessible to the public. Forty acres of parkland that can be used, uh, by the public that, that's easily accessible, uh, to our citizens, uh, and gives them an opportunity to use the bay in ways that have been in sense all can continue to grow economy which brings lots of really jobs to our city and offers us the opportunity at some point to move our commercial airport, uh, to a location that's much more easily accessible than its current location. So thi- this was, i- i- it's very hard to overstate the importance of this agreement to the city of Mobile, uh, in the future, both from an economic development standpoint and a quality of life standpoint. And, uh, I would just like to congratulate and thank everybody, uh, from Governor Ivy, Mayor Stimson, uh, the Airport Authority, uh, everybody that had a hand in making this happen because it's just a tremendous development for the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely, Mr. Daves. Uh, have, have I overlooked anyone? I don't believe so. Uh, and I, I just want to echo the sentiments of, of coming to offer by my colleagues early and wishing everyone celebrating a Hanukkah, a, a very happy and festive celebration. Uh, we're excited about the news, uh, with the Brookly property, appreciative of the governor, appreciative of Mayor Stimson, and his team, the, and Britton Bonner and others who worked over the last six years, I know, to try to uh, get us to this point of, of bringing it into fruition, and we're excited about having waterfront access for our citizens and our visitors here in the city of Mobile. The news with Africa Town is great, and we will, we will continue to hear great news in that regard as the steam picks up both locally, nationally, and internationally. Uh, it's a story that needs to be told, and it needs to be told the right way, respectful of not only, uh, the indigenous people who were brought there, but also of the descendants that still live and thrive and worship there. Uh, and if you drive down the interstate, you will see, uh, one of the first, uh, street name changes that I sponsored, which was changing Bay Bridge Road to Africa Town Boulevard. The state has updated that signage, it's a no doubt moment that you're going into Africa Town Boulevard now. And I think as we continue, uh, to build upon what's going on there, that will be important as far as wayfinding. Everyone will know that you got one mile until you can turn to the right, and you'll be right on Africa Town Boulevard. So I'm incredibly appreciative of the Department, Alabama Department of Transportation, uh, and their new leader for, for getting that goal accomplished. Uh, there's just so much going on, we'll be sponsoring three food drives, three food giveaways, rather, between now and Christmas with the Corinthian and the Yorktown and the Chuvine Baptist Churches and areas throughout District Two. We'll have that information hopefully soon from Feeding the Gulf Coast. Um, want to remind our citizens, uh, that we still need to practice our social distancing, we still need to wear our mask. Uh, we just need to be respectful, in order to get respect, you ought to show respect, and, uh, wearing that mask exhibits respect not only for you, but for those who are in your environment. Uh, that pretty well closes out my announcements, uh, if I don't hear any further announcements from members of the council or from the administration. Uh, ma'am, city clerk, I don't, okay, are we clear? Mr. Vice President?
Uh, this is, uh, once you conclude the meeting, uh, this, uh, adjourned meeting, I'm, I ask that we take, probably make a five-minute break and come back at eleven-twenty, uh, for the C I P meeting.
No problem at all, Mr. Vice President. Uh, do I hear a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Oh, and congratulations, Mr. Richardson, becoming a great grandpa.
Yay!
London Lawson into the world.
Yeah.
That, that is exciting, congratulations.
All right.
Yeah, congratulations, Fred, I know that's very exciting for you.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Are we staying on this link, or are we going to a different link? Stay in here.
Stay here, I believe.
Okay.
So there's been a motion, a second, or